Okay, School Board, making the order. And if everybody please stand for a brief range. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Grandpa, we've got some presentations.
We do. Chairman, thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to go with Scott County Schools Volunteers of the Month. As always, it's very appreciative of the time and effort that you give to our schools and our students of Scott County. Volunteers of the Month, first from Birchfield Elementary School is Ms. Gina Fravlin. Fairview Elementary School, Danny Burris. Huntsville Elementary School, Josh Lay and Chris Burris. Huntsville Middle School, Sarah Cecil. Robbins Elementary, Tony Williams. Winfield Elementary School, Karen Brewster. Chairman, at this time, we would like to announce the Scott High School, Scott County Chamber of Commerce, Stand Student of the Month. Trey Morrow, the 18-year-old son of Kevin and Rebecca Morrow of the Hustle community, was selected by the Scott High School staff as a January Stand Student of the Month. Trey is a four-year member of the Highland basketball team. Trey holds a school record in rebounds, and he is on the 2,000-point club. Currently, Trey is the third highest-leading scorer in Scott High School history. Trey has also earned several MVP awards over his playing career. He's a finalist, he was a finalist, in Mr. Basketball. Trey has assisted with the summer basketball camp at SHS for four years and always enjoys Chairman's love and support with others. Trey has earned a GPA of 3.42. He is interested in pursuing a career in the medical field. Currently, Trey is still looking at all options for higher academic placement. Congratulations. And at this time, as Chairman, it is my pleasure to announce this year's Scott High School Building Level Teachers of the Year. And also, immediately after that, when we call your name, let's come here and stand, please, we'll also announce the district-level Teachers of the Year. Before I announce that, we'll be announcing a list of the prizes that are for the Teachers of the Year. Unfortunately, we don't have everyone, I guess with Miss Keaton and some things and COVID, weren't able to get all the prizes in. So those will become the next pair, too. We will get all the prizes to the teachers. Building-level Teachers of the Year this year will receive a $50 check from Scott County Schools and a building-level certificate. District-level Teacher of the Year will receive a $150 check from Scott County Schools, building-level award plaque from Togi Masters, $50 cashiers' check from First National Bank, $50 credit on electric bill from Plateau Electric, and district-level certificate. And now, at this time, as Chairman and Scott County School Board, it is my honor and privilege to announce this year's building-level Teachers of the Year. First, from Birchfield Elementary School, grades pre-K through 4, Shannon Terry Jefferies, is a Jefferies teacher's kindergarten. Also, from Birchfield Elementary School, grades 5 through 8, is Angela Carson, is Angela teacher's math.
Thank you.
Fairview Elementary School, grades pre-K through 4, Carol Knox, Carol teacher's second grade at Fairview Elementary School. Fairview Elementary School, grades 5 through 8, Janet Lloyd, fifth-grade ELA. Huntsville Elementary School, grades pre-K through 4, is Robin Sexton, third-grade ELA. Huntsville Middle School, Sharon Woodward, sixth-grade ELA. Robbins Elementary School, grades pre-K through 4, Tracy Sexton, second grade. Robbins Elementary School, grades 5 through 8, Tammy Russ, fifth and sixth-grade math. Winfield Elementary School, grades pre-K through 4, Amanda Ayers, first grade. Winfield Elementary School, grades 5 through 8, Darby Laxton, sixth and eighth-grade science and social studies. Grades 9 through 12, Scott High School, Tanya Permanen, chemistry and physical science. Ms. Chairman, at this time, I would like to announce our district-level Teachers of the Year. Oh, I'm sorry. Got it? Thank you. Again, at this time, I would like to announce the district-level Teachers of the Year. In grades pre-K through 4, is Robin Sexton, Huntsville Elementary School, third-grade ELA. Grades 5 through 8, is Janet Lloyd, fifth-grade ELA. And grades 9 through 12, Tanya Permanen, Scott High School, chemistry and physical science. And Ms. Chairman, that concludes our presentations of the month of January. And guys, thank you so much for what you do, for everything you do for our students. It's a great honor, you guys. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Ms. Annie, do you want to go first?
I will. I don't have anything new since last week, but our COVID numbers are jumping drastically daily. So.
Christmas break.
Excuse me. I'll reiterate, I don't have anything new, but same thing. We've definitely seen a spike in COVID numbers from students, but also had some staff and some teachers and staff. The thing that's making it difficult at this point is it's not just COVID. You've got some COVID, you've got some flu, you've got some just respiratory things. And then, you have all the regular, normal stuff. Doctor's appointments, there are some leaves, things like that. So it only takes just a few, you know, positive COVID cases with adults. By the time you add in those regular things that you're, you know, we were sitting today, it's 10% of our adults out, which is really kind of that threshold when you really start to, start really evaluating things. So it's keep in mind that it's not just COVID. Does COVID affect things? It absolutely does. But in addition to COVID, you've got all the regular stuff that people need to be up for, too. And adults are what keeps the school running. You know, you can come to school, and it is difficult to manage when you've got a lot of students out, but you can't run a school without teachers. And so when teachers start being out, that's difficult. Some of the other closures sometimes affect some of the teachers because now their kids aren't in school. And so what do you do there? So we've tried to make some accommodations there because we value those teachers in the classroom and, you know. So we're having some digital elementary school at Scott High. We have a regular class, too, just to make sure that those teachers stay in the classroom because we want to try to do everything we can in order to stay open. But I'll reiterate, as Annie said, we'll keep you guys posted each day. That could change very quickly.
Thank you. Ms. Stanley, you want to go next?
That's fine. We want to congratulate our Volunteer of the Month, Tara Brewster, and our teachers, building-level Teachers of the Year, Amanda Ayers and Darby Laxton. This is a tough time for all school personnel. In the almost 40 years I've been with the Scott County school system, I think the last couple of years have been the toughest. And it's definitely been the toughest as long as I've been principal. So I just want to say how much I appreciate our staff. And that's from, it doesn't matter whether it's cafeteria workers, custodians, teachers, teachers assistants, office personnel. Our people at Winfield just seem to pull together. The harder, the tougher the times, the more they pull together. So I want to thank all of them. Like the other two principals have said, our absentees are going up as well due to sickness. And of course, there is the constant problem of not enough subs. So that remains a problem. A reminder to students and parents that if your child is quarantined, please use your laptop to log in. We are still having classes, so please continue to log in. And finally, we want to thank the board. This is School Board Appreciation Month. I hope you found your card at your place tonight and your gift cards. Those are from all the elementary schools. And we just want to let you all know how much we appreciate the time and thought and effort that you all put into the schools and the systems. We really do appreciate that. So thank you to all of you.
Well, thank you, too, for the gift cards and the cards. We appreciate it.
Thank you on behalf of all the elementary schools.
Okay, is Ms. Tanya with us? Okay. How about Ms. Goodman? No. Ms. Lisa? No, okay. Let me shout, I guess you will hear it next.
Thank you. To reiterate what some of the principals are saying, we are seeing a little spike in the COVID, not just with teachers, but also with our students. Kind of expected, you know, kind of see the way this is running and what's going on around us in surrounding counties. Currently, we do have Huntsville Elementary School is digital for today and tomorrow. Birchfield has their sixth and seventh-grade class. And let me reiterate this again, guys. I cannot close the district for COVID. We can shut down certain classes, we can do a school, but I cannot close school for COVID. You know, but we will make decisions as we go and I get with principals. We'll make the decision in the best interest of our safety and health of our students at all times. And we monitor this daily, and we do take it very seriously. So the good thing is, what I'm hearing, it's not as bad as far as the virus for the most part. And I know some, it probably is, but for the most part, the majority, what I'm hearing, it's not as. But we still want to always put everyone's personal safety and health in mind first. To the board, Board Appreciation Week will begin January 23rd and 29th. And as always, we're very appreciative of what you do daily with Scott County Schools. I'll be reaching out to you guys if you guys want to do something together. I know we are in a time right now where it's probably not the best for us to be together, but I would like to do a little something if you could. So I'll reach out to you, kind of look at our timeframe, sort of work on your schedule, and then we will go from there. Also, the basketball tournament, the TMSAA, will begin this Monday. There will be satellite and out, so we may have some teams playing at home and some teams that will be traveling. The semifinals and finals, we played at Jolicoop High School. So if you have questions, these are a copy of a bracket, I have one for times. You can, I can send one to you if you want. If you do, just let me know. Also, a reminder to the, to the Scott County Schools that there'll be no school Monday on the 17th due to the service of Mark Luther King holiday. Also, today was a big announcement come through from the Supreme Court of the United States that the vaccine mandate will not take place. We do not have to ask our people or force our people to get the vaccine. That was upheld today within the Supreme Court of the United States. So there is no vaccine mandate. So guys, that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions for later.
Okay, that brings us to item seven, adoption of the agenda. In accordance with Board Policy Number 1.403, the Scott County Board of Education should adopt an agenda of all items to be acted on during the regular monthly meeting of January 13th, 2022. May I have a motion to approve the January 13th, 2022 agenda?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Wayne N. Rowcall.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Ms. Terry?
Aye.
Ms. Stillcox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd? Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item eight, Consider Agenda Items. In accordance with Scott County Board of Education Policy Number 4.403, the Board of Education may include routine and non-controversial items on a considered agenda, which may be adopted by single vote without discussions. Any item on the considered agenda may be removed and placed on the regular agenda for further consideration at the request of any board member. May I have a motion to approve the items listed on the considered agenda as follows? A, approval of amendments for December 2021. B, approval of the bills and financial report for November of 2021. Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Wayne N. Rowcall.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Stillcox?
Aye.
Ms. Terry?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item nine-eight, approve amendments. In pursuant to Board Policy Number 2.201, the Scott County Board of Education needs to approve budget amendments required to balance the budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022. This action will allow funds to be applied to areas of the budget that lack sufficient funds to complete the school year. May I have a motion to approve the following amendments? GP Amendment Number Six, Federal Amendment Number Six, and Food Service Amendment Number One. Motion. Second. Any discussion? Wayne N. Rowcall.
Ms. Terry?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Ms. Stillcox?
Aye.
Item nine-D, approve Clinchpound Educational Membership. Board approval is needed to continue the contract between the Scott County school system and the Clinchpound Educational Cooperative. May I have a motion to continue the membership between the Scott County school system and Clinchpound Educational Cooperative in the amount of $2,500? Motion. Second. Any discussion? Wayne N. Rowcall.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Terry?
Aye.
Ms. Stillcox?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Sorry, down there. Okay, sorry. Item nine-C, bid request. In accordance with Scott County Board of Education Policy Number 2.806 concerning bids and quotations, all purchases of supplies, uniforms, equipment, and contractual services in excess of $10,000 shall be based on competitive bids. May I have a motion to request that the Scott County Finance Director bid the following item? One simulation mandoline for nursing service, plasma CNC table for welding, sparse C, welders for welding, sparse C, cabinets for the following, family resource office, nurses' offices in Birchfield Elementary, Fairview Elementary, Huntsville Elementary Middle School, and Scott High School, paid with. Fairview Elementary, Huntsville Elementary, Middle School, and Scott High School paid with E L A grant. Wait for a motion.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. What is the, uh, is that something we've always done for technology is buy welders and stuff?
This is for the, uh, spark grant, yeah.
Where are they, where is this stuff going?
It's going to the T Cat up at, uh, the Hill there, uh, right above Scott High School. Our students are doing a role in the welding department, so.
Is this the first time we've got this grant?
No, we, we've had this grant, yeah.
This is the third version of it, and, uh, we had, we fought welders for them before. We bought stuff for the, uh, with the other spark grant, uh, bought stuff for the machine shop and different, uh, programs.
It's a, it's a good thing, they use this, but I just, I, I have never seen this.
Yeah.
And the E L C grant, you know, which grant is?
That was what was, while we applied for through the COVID chance, nursing, uh, to get the COVID testing. And also, we use it on buy to do equipment also, it's also to.
And so, that will.
$400,000 on the grant.
And that will cover our family resources other than nursing?
Absolutely, yes.
Any more discussion? Wayne N. Rowe call.
Mr. Stillcox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Uh.
Mr. Sexton?
Ah.
Ms. Terry?
Aye.
Item nine D, independent contractor agreement. The Scott County School Board, School District wishes to contract with Ms. Peggy Sexton for special education services for the 2021, 2022 school year beginning January the 4th, 2022. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Peggy Sexton for the 2021, 2022 school year beginning January the 4th, 2022? Motion. Second. Wayne N. Rowe call.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Terry?
Aye.
Mr. Stillcox?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley? Mr. Sexton?
Ah.
Item nine E, Principal Pay Deck. The Scott County School System adheres to the policy recommended by our accrediting institution, Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, S A C S, regarding principal pay. The policy states the school system will implement a remuneration plan for all members of the staff that recognize administrative pay as the highest paid employee. The principal hired in the Scott County Schools, Scott County System was not receiving the correct salary based on this policy with our S A C S. Therefore, the principal will receive the difference of pay to ensure the S A C S policy was followed. May I have a motion to pay back, or to back pay a principal that was not the highest paid employee in the building? The principal will receive the difference in pay to ensure the S A C S.
Vote.
May I have second?
We'll have to get second before we discuss it, so.
I'll second.
Derek?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh. Okay, Wayne N. Rowe call. Any other discussion? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say. I didn't, okay. All right. Now, we're still not in S A C S?
No, we're not, we're not in S A C S anymore, no.
Okay. Did the board make a policy?
Yes, to make sure that they're only S A C S recommendations, yes. Yes.
That is a mention.
Added in the minute, yes.
Okay, how much are we talking about? And how, and how many years back?
Uh, since you started, 10 years, just day one, it turned out to be about $26,000. There was some, there was some situation, not she only was second high, but she was the third high paying student on Sunday.
Who are we talking about?
Talking about the instructor. Yeah, we discovered this this year.
Okay.
And, uh, matter of fact, she's one of our attention, and we go, and she's been correct. And, uh, and Amanda's got everything documented, we've got everything documented from finance. We also checked every other principal, checked every employee on that as well.
And what will that money come out of?
It will come out of our reserve.
And how much was it?
$26,000.
What, how, what will the pay increase be?
The pay increase? It won't be a pay increase, it's just a back pay.
It won't, 10 years from now, we'll be in the same boat?
No, no, but we, we correct all that.
It's rent divided into the new scale.
With the new scale, everything's been correct. With the new scale that you guys approved, yeah.
Yeah.
This is what you guys approved, everything is correct. Everything is correct. It's, like, Amanda's got all the documentation, finance has all the documentation.
So, with this S A C S, what the board has adopted, I would say.
Yes, well, it happens to be the highest paid.
No one in there.
Can be higher paid than the principal. No.
There's no, I mean, it's got to be teaching, right? There's no, uh, like, I know one time we had a, uh, a teacher that done, was part-time janitor.
Mm-hmm.
We've had teachers that are coaches. It's no supplements. It is only teaching position.
No, it is, it is everything.
Bringing or.
Remuneration is everything.
Means everything.
It's everything. That's a, that's a coach.
It means total salary.
Everything.
Remuneration.
Total, total salary.
But even, even outside of that, it was still there. But I can tell, I mean, if you have questions about how it occurred, I can tell you how it occurred. It was a complete, just, just accident, mistake, oversight that nobody, um, intended or, um, even really caught on to. Because what happened was the board added a scale, um, for PhDs and E D Ds, okay? Which then automatically, right, jumps for, so for those people, so you added a section on that scale, which again, butts your highest paid. So, you have a person like me who ends up in a position who, because most people in those positions would have E D Ss, which at the time, right, was that highest category. Well, then they changed and added an additional category. And so, then, you know, you've got a person that, like me, who is not in that highest category, and you've got some people who are. And it ends up creating a misbalance, but it was just because your administrative scale was based off of your teacher pay scale. The teacher pay scale changed and those things weren't absorbed when you had people like me who weren't necessarily maxed out. And by maxed out, I mean had the highest level of degree and the highest level of experience, which is what you have in most administrative situations. All but, I think, maybe two prior to when I became principal. That had only happened two other times before. So, but it wasn't a problem then because those people, again, they were maxed out. They were at the corner of the scale, that top corner, you know, if you're looking at the pay scale, they were at that top corner. It wasn't a problem. But when, then when you added that extra category of E D Ds and PhDs, it created that.
And I, and I can give you a scenario when I was assistant principal and Doug was assistant principal. Uh, when we both assistant principals, because I had, I had an E D S and I had coaching supplements. Was putting me the highest paid. Well, but our law said the principal had to be, so automatically, the principal had to make more than me with everything. Top salary, had to be the highest, not teaching back here, total salary, okay? So, they had to change hers to make her the highest paid at that time also too. And when we, as we looked and went back, and like I said, we have everything documented, Amanda showed, she was never the highest paid in the building.
I, I, I don't doubt, I doubt that, but I did not realize, and you and Doug were part-time.
End up, well, we both come an extra month, and then we're both coaching sport. I, I come an extra month for basketball.
Part-time, but you had to teach.
Part-time assistant principal, we taught a class.
And, and like I said, as I look back over my career, that's when they put us 11 and 12 months to ensure.
Not they were that way.
Well, we have a lot of people now.
But again, the, like me, who are younger in experience and, you know, maybe don't have the top degree but are in administrative roles. And that was one of the, um, sparring to make sure that we changed that administrative pay scale so that that didn't occur again. Because it would, if you left it based on that teacher pay scale, it absolutely would occur. And you don't want it to occur again, you don't want that to even be a possibility.
Well, and we too, I mean, I had doctors under me, but we did not count the bus drivers. You know, their salary that they made, we didn't count supplements when they looked.
No, we didn't take, like, one in particular, we did not take their bus driver's salary to count in that.
Oh, yeah.
We don't count that, no.
No.
We took, we took coaching supplements, yes.
And our janitor, we didn't.
Yes. And it was, it was coaching supplements, but that's part of their duties. And like I said, my coaching supplement was added in when they made this, was in the highest paid. Okay, it had to be, because all my, my coaching supplements at the time, uh, put me the highest, which I couldn't be, probably what the law says, she had this. So, they didn't take this one, my salary was, they took coaching supplements and everything based on that, I mean, the highest paid.
And, and a concern of mine is, you know, just recently, the maintenance man, we had to go back and get some of their salaries. And now, we're fixing this, it does concern me of what's going to be next.
Yeah, well, we, we have literally gone through that with everything.
Well, I, I, and that's fine, and I'm not, I'm not against you getting, you know, whatever, but I really did not realize it included supplements.
It includes everything, yes, it does. And that's what the remuneration is, everything. Like I said, I was in a situation too, uh, when I was assistant principal, because I was going to make more than the principal.
Well, because otherwise, if it doesn't, you're being asked to supervise something that you're, that's not being calculated into your salary. So, you can have a person who supplements over you, but you're supposed to be supervising that person. So, again, if you're the head of the building, it has to be an instructor, but I'm just saying in theory.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Sure.
I just didn't realize that that's the way it's calculated, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And if the board took the same policy.
Right, but like, if, I'm, but like, what you were talking about, some, like, with bus drivers and stuff, like, people that have, like, second jobs.
That's not.
No, that was not considered at all. No, no.
I hear it wasn't.
Yeah, no, absolutely not.
Do you know about the suggestion, uh, recommendation? And this is from an audit standpoint, that whatever this amount is, 26 or 26 in a penny.
Yeah.
This amount needs to be in the reservation for audit purposes.
Okay.
Because if we don't, we don't put the exact amount, they're going, this is going to be an audit.
Yeah, well, then it'll, it'll be in there.
So, okay, let's make sure that's in our meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely.
Just ring for discussion. Wayne N. Rowe call.
Mr. Stillcox?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Ah.
Ms. Terry?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
No.
Okay, that brings us to nine H. Mr. Stillcox, did everything?
Thank you, everybody, for what they do, and I, I did want to thank everybody for the, uh, the cards, each school, all of those entries. Thank everybody for what they do. I know, you're a professional, you probably don't get that much, but thank everybody. Thank all the teachers and staff and faculty and all the, uh, assistants, everybody. Thank you for today.
Scarlett?
Uh, just like to say, say, and thank you for the card. And, uh, I hate to see our numbers going up. Just everybody try and stay healthy. I agree. I, I do appreciate being appreciated.
Okay. Okay. Now, I appreciate you, my phone, yes, we've got to send the room for here. Mr. Stanley, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank the elementary principals for the gift and for the great job they've been doing, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Derek Sexton?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to thank the elementary schools as well for the gift and like to thank God that, uh, this round of COVID was near as bad as the last one for my family.
Thank you. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I just want to tell Ms. Kim, we miss her. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Is, Ms. Kim is not with the issue? No. Okay. Have I missed anybody? And the elementary schools, thank you for those gift cards and the card, we appreciate it. Thank you for all you do. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Vote.
Second. Second. Wayne N. Rowe call.
Mr. Stillcox?
Aye.
Ms. Terry?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd? Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Stanley?
Ah.
Sexton?